All right then, welcome to tonight's regular meeting of Town Council. Very good then. All right folks, so stay tuned, we're getting ready to get things off. Not to a raucous start, but to a start at least. So, you're tuning in to the translated version of the regular meeting of the Clarence Rockland Council, held on August 27, 2018, at 6:30pm. We're just waiting for some preliminaries to get out of the way. Very good then. Mr. Keogh, what an honor to see you again!
I thought you'd lost your way back to the office. They give a rainy week and get golf, so he's come to work. Well, we pick on him, we don't pick on Jerry. Don't you feel the love, Mr. Keogh? And Mr. Wilson hasn't started yet. Okay, so, closing meeting. Okay. Be it resolved that the regular meeting be adjourned? No?
I have the resolution, be it resolved that the City of Clarence Rockland hereby accepts the conditions enacted under Resolution 2018-143 of the United Counties of Prescott and Russell, in order to finalize the sale of the ambulance station.
Seconded by? Is it, is this, has this been translated? Yes. We have a motion to put an end to the closed meeting, moved by Councilor Zandt and seconded by Councilor Chouagnier. Go ahead, be it resolved, the City of Clarence Rockland accepts the conditions that are set out in Resolution 2018-143 stemming from the United Counties of Prescott and Russell, to finalize the sale of the ambulance station. I'll second this resolution, Mr. Mayor. All those in favor then, carried. Very well. Is this it? We have a few deferred items also. Fine. Consent items? No, not yet?
We close the meeting, yeah?
But we're still at Tarabont, the report.
That report has been deferred to the next council.
Moved by Councilor Grimald and seconded by Councilor Laverre. All those in favor, carried then, thank you. Announcements? Do any of you have any announcements to make? Don't tell me you don't have any announcements to make, Mr. Lalonde. Well, no, none at this time. Well, the Saint Pascal Optimus Club will be hosting a golf tournament on the 22nd of September, if any of you are interested in taking part in that activity, please contact me. There's also an activity, is set up at the La Rose Forest on the 22nd of September also, on that same day. Fine, is that it? That takes care of announcements. All right then. Question period, if anyone has any questions? If any of you have any questions of Town Council, please step forward. They say in English, "The more the merrier," so go ahead. A little bit in English, another bit in French then. My name is Mariae Blay, I live at 108 Onyx Crescent in Rockland. So, we all live in the same neighborhood, and last week, Mr. Mayor, we attended Town Council, well, we attended before a minor variance, the minor variance committee, and a neighbor in front of where we live wishes to build an 18 by 22 foot garage, 18 meters high, and according to us, it's absolutely a gigantic project. 15 meters, you said? I'm sorry, 5 meters 15 feet, I apologize, Mr. Mayor, because that would be really ridiculous. So I'm here tonight to represent the interests of many neighbors, Jennifer and Terrence, Jardine, Ken who's here, Sylvain Deschamps who lives at 106 Onyx, Sean White who lives at 134 Onyx, and Gary and Stacy Burge who lives at 135, as well as those two individuals that accompany me here tonight. What we're trying to determine tonight, along with you, is that we're trying to appeal this decision, they asked a minor variance, 2% over and above the allotted limit, it would be 326 square feet instead of 324 square feet. We think this is an immense building that we propose to build, and we're trying to ask you to review the bylaw, we're asking you to do so, to review the enacted bylaw that allows an accessory building such, such as this one, in a community such as ours, where homes are built close together. We understand where in the building, an accessory building or dwelling of such a nature would be okay, would be considered normal, but in our neighborhood, this gives rise to concern because it would impact the value of our house. We contacted the MPA C Board, they told us that yes, the value of our homes would be reduced by this construction, and we're asking you then to review this bylaw. Well, I think that what is suggested here tonight is to send it back to the department so that it may be reviewed, to see if something could be done. Fine, can I add anything? Yes. Thank you, thank you for your attention. No, I believe you've said it all, fine then. Would anyone else care to address council? No? Well, that's fine, let's go on now to council members' items. Councilor Lalonde, go ahead, go slow but go ahead. Mr. Mayor, that, I'd like to deal with this monster auction that is hosted by the Saint Raide folks at Jean-Marc Lalonde Arena, whereas there would be a consignment auction organized by Saint Raide on the 8th of September, and whereas the city needs to get rid of a boat, be it resolved that the City of Clarence Rockland sell off this boat at that particular auction on consignment, upon the condition that profits be proportionately shared to the tune of 60% going to the city and 40% going to Saint Raide. This is the rescue boat, Mr. Mayor, that I allude to, the city's rescue boat. Seconded by Councilor Zandt, fine. Councilor Grimald?
The value of that boat on the market, when we, if we sell it?
Not accurate.
Give me a, give us a, maybe a ballpark figure?
Through the mayor, I would say high end, maybe 10,000, low end's probably 5, somewhere in there.
And my second question, I guess, are we allowed to do this? Okay, perfect. I think it's a great loss, and we still have to sell it.
Saint Feig was there when we had the floods and all this, they were there to help us.
My, my only concern is if the new boat has not been delivered, can we put a condition to retain the boat until we get it, like we can sell it? Okay. Okay, yes, because we still need a boat.
Monsieur Lalonde can't sell the new boat either.
Well, I believe that we wanted to get rid of this particular rescue boat, so if we can make a profit out of doing so, that's fine. Yes. I ask you to phone up the company to determine what was happening with this particular vote. I'm not going to change my vote, I'm going to vote also in favor of this. All those in favor, carried then, let's go on now to item 9.2. Mr. Mayor, let me read the resolution. Whereas the 2016-10 zoning bylaw allows garage or a shed be 8% of the general surface, and whereas residential properties have smaller and smaller lots, be it resolved that council, Town Council mandate the Department of Infrastructure and Land Planning to prepare comparable figures and dimensions with other municipalities to modify or change the standing resolution or bylaw, if applicable. Mr. Mayor, I've put myself in the shoes of those residents that have appeared before council tonight, I believe it's the onus is upon us to ensure that our neighborhoods remain residential. In a rural area, of course, there might be other criteria to be applicable, but we should try to avoid roofs that are 15 feet high or more. I know that some individuals, well, the original contractor that came up with the original subdivision plans had put in this subdivision provision that allowed this.
Had put that in, that it was allowed. He's the one that sort of caused the whole thing, even Flonwood says they're against it, has the original company, which is gone now, that had done the subdivision that way.
But I think it's worth a review, so. That's what I propose, I believe Madame Simon is willing to support the, okay?
Yeah, it needs to be reviewed because other people will do it too.
Yep, yep. And especially maybe you will suggest, Monsieur Navia was saying the other day, there is trusses that are, don't have to be 15 feet, they can be a little lower, pitch has to be smaller.
We could, we could frame it better, not playing with words, but we could frame the bylaw much better. Thank you, Monsieur Navia.
All those in favor then, carried. Item 9.3, don't have anything to add, but I'd like to read a memo sent by Mr. Claude Poudrez, states that I'm a retired police officer from the MTL, I know what I'm talking about, now on the 26th of August, Highway 17 in Edwards, there was an accident, and firefighters managed in a very professional way the traffic there. Congratulations for your, their efficiency.
You know about that? Yeah, it's a very nice job. It drove by just a few seconds after noise.
Let's go on to consent items, are there any items that you would like to take away from the standing agenda? Councilor Laverre, please. Maybe Jean-Marc would like to withdraw an item before we go any further, he usually does, okay. Be it resolved that the following items identified under consent items at the regular meeting of Town Council be adopted. Item 10.1, adoption of the minutes of the following meetings. The regular meeting of August 13th, the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting of August 13th. 10.2, receipt of the minutes of the following meetings. Heritage Advisory Committee, meeting held on May 29, 2018. Item 10.3, the following recommendations from Committee of the Whole of August 13, 2018. Final Report regarding the 2017 flood, transfer of project ring boards, transfer of funds, renovation of the Clarence Creek Community Hall, amendment to the ICE rental policy, special activities. Item 10.4, resolution to adopt the salaries paid from June 3, 2018, to August 11, 2018, in the gross amount of $2,260,723.37, and a net amount of $1,619,509.1. Well, let me tell you, that, that was a tongue twister, wasn't it? Seconded by Councilor Sima, all those in favor, carried then. Let's go on now to accounts paid. Councilor Lalonde, be it resolved that the accounts payable for the period of the 9th of June, 2018, to the 17th of August, 2018, the amount of $10,467,735.46 be adopted as recommended, seconded by Councilor Sima. Questions? Councilor Grimald?
Mr. Mayor, I note that some credit cards were used to purchase some items on Amazon, those are items that could have been purchased within the municipality itself, I know that things might cost a bit less by going through Amazon, but I believe that if the merchandise that they're seeking is available here, I would like that these purchases, these are cellular phone cases, or carrying cases, maybe there was nothing in town available, but I would like us to keep our purchases as local as we can. Well, I believe there are four hardware stores here in our area, five if you count the Bourget Hardware Store. They needed swivel casters, and I believe that a swivel caster certainly is available amongst any of those five businesses. Also, I had one question with regards to expenditures, not credit cards of course, but at line 153, we have a $5,500? $5,700 for a washing machine? Mr. Lenar, did you purchase that? Well, this washing machine was purchased for one of our daycare centers, and was part and parcel of a project in which United Counties of Prescott and Russell had an interest in. This is a commercial dishwashing unit, includes installation and everything. Fine. You know, Mario, I know some dishwashers that cost much less than that amount. In any event, all those in favor? Line 48, Mr. Mayor, we had occasion to purchase a refrigerator at Lowe's, and I'm sure there are refrigerators being sold here in Rockland. I'm surprised that for a $432.79 item cannot be purchased here in Rockland. Mr. Wilson?
To answer the answer's question, we did source out a Frigidaire beverage center fridge for the conference room, we priced that out locally through Accent. The best price we can get through Accent was just shy of $490 plus tax. I was in Ottawa for another meeting and stocked at Lowe's because they had one in stock, I was able to look at it, it was incorrectly priced on the shelf for $399, and they, Lowe's was willing to honor that price, so we ended up buying it for $383 or something like that, which saved us about $100 over buying it locally.
I'm sure there's other places in Terrence, also.
Through the mayor, we did check with Rona, and they don't stock that particular model, and I checked with Walmer, they don't stock it. Accent was able to get it, but we'd have to wait to get it in, and it was going to be about $100 or more. It was a bit of a fluke that Lowe's had it there, and we were able to pick it up off the shelf and save about $100.
That reminds me, if a person wants to buy a Cadillac, he's going to put the specs for the Cadillac, and sometimes the Cadillac is not sold in our municipality. So, what you're telling me is about the same thing, you went for a refrigerator of a certain type or model, and they don't have it at the other place here in Rockland. So that's my, a fridge, base of fridge.
Yeah, but they didn't have it in stock, Monsieur Lalonde, so that's why Mr. Wilson...
You mean to say that Accent wouldn't have that in stock?
Well, they didn't have it in stock, I bought a, I just bought a fridge, stove there, and they didn't have it in stock, I waited two weeks for it. Mr. Wilson?
Through the mayor, I did speak with Guy there today regarding that, he assured me that they would have to order it, they don't have it in stock at Accent, and that they would have to wait to do a bulk purchase for it, and it would have come in at sort of the same sticker price as what I could have got it for at Lowe's. The only reason we got it for cheaper at Lowe's was because of a mistake made at Lowe's, and the price on the shelf was incorrectly marked, and they were willing to order it, otherwise we could have sourced it.
Was there, was there an urgency? If he could order it, it's like when I go to Home Artwear, very often they don't have it, they're going to tell me, well, the delivery's coming in next Tuesday, three days of waiting. To buy locally, we should try and do our best to buy locally.
My only goal was to try and save the city some money, we saved about $100 to it.
Any other questions? Yes, I had another question. Item 124, I'm taking a look at a $15,541 invoice, Performance Printing. Now, there are two very good printers working within Prescott-Russell, even the City of Hall purchases everything that it prints out of the printer located in Plantage Genet. I'm sorry, line item 47, I was mistaken as to the line item, I apologize, it's line item 47. Performance Printing. The Ambra printer is a superb printer, and the Plantage Genet printers are expert printers. Mr. Mayor, we asked seven companies to tender, we received two tenderers, one Rockland-based company at $6,697, and Performance Printing at Smiths Falls at $4,700 plus tax. So, there was that much of a difference with regard to a $5,000 job. Well, if we went to tender, as was the case, we had, we were compelled to take the lowest bid. Any other questions, Mr. Lalonde? Line 155 and line 156, oh, I'm sorry, line 165 and line 166, Mr. Mayor? Photon? Photon or photon? Yes? Everything is expansion, line, secondary plan, anyways, it's a $20,000, $22,000 expenditure. I'm trying to make things out here because this is a small type, but what project does this refer, refer to? Well, Potenz is the firm that we hired to perform an analysis with regard to recurring invoices that come in month in and month out. They gave us a presentation, I was quite impressed by the presentation they gave us, these folks are very, are always available, I asked them some very solid questions, and they came up with some very solid answers during the course of their presentation. Very good. Let's go on now to the new fire station, Councilor Grimald? New fire station. Be it resolved that council authorized the Director of Protective Services to approve change orders in the construction of the new fire stations totaling $177,406.40, as outlined in Report PRO 2018-01, which falls within the overall budget approved in the fire station projects. Seconded by Councilor Chouagnier? Mr. Wilson? I'm concerned about us spending contingency funds on earmarked for a building that has not begun construction yet. So, I am in agreement with that also. Nobody else has an issue with this then? No? Go ahead.
Can you just bring me up to speed on exactly what's happening here, why this is... Through the mayor to the councilors, and I'm sure you're not alone, councilor, some questions in regards to the change orders that we're asking for. The first item that we've asked for that's outlined in the report is the $33,000 to supply and install the radiant in-floor heating tubing in Matifol, the council had directed us to do at the time of the war, so we've priced that amount out to $33,000. There were a number of regulatory requirements that were changed during site plan approval process, one of which was the inclusion of a ramp at the back in Rockland to allow for snow removal, as well as some additional curving, and the repositioning of the building to better accommodate the structure, which changed some fill requirements.
If I could just add to that, we hired, we paid a lot of money for a company to actually do this, Colliers comes to mind, so how, with all of their expertise in building fire halls, did they not come up with this during the initial plan?
Through the mayor, I guess the reality is that some of these site plan changes are a requirement because we have a mixed-use building with City Hall parking in behind. So if City Hall, as an example, wasn't going to use the rear parking lot, snow removal would be less of an issue, we'd push all the snow back off the property and could sit in that parking lot. That doesn't work in our application, because we have city staff that park in that rear parking lot, which means we need to come up with an alternative plan for snow removal.
But they knew that?
We knew that it would be a challenge, but the question is, at the time of contract award in a design-build contract, the challenge is that we can have a conceptual idea about how we're going to do things, but once we sit down to actually put that on paper and design the building out, sometimes there are regulatory requirement changes or suggestions from departments that then create undue changes as part of that process, that's why we have the contingency in there. So, as an example, in order to get the fire stations within budget, we eliminated curbs, because we felt we really need to have curbs, that's a zoning requirement, and it was put back in, because we have to have curbs under our zoning law.
But again, though, they should have known that, that is what their expertise is, is to go through this, it's not, I'm not trying to drill the fire department, you're not the one building this, so there's a company that is building it for us. I'm just, I'm really disappointed, and now I'm a little worried, without even a shovel in the ground yet, on two fire halls, what else is going to come up that they're not even going to think of? And that's my worry, because we talked extensively about how much money to put aside, was this going to be enough, because we don't want to keep going back to death on certain things. And this has me really worried, and the fact that something as basic as snow removal wasn't even thought of by a company that is called an expert in the field. So, I'll let somebody else talk there, but I'm just, I'm a little disappointed, actually a lot disappointed.
I see the Bourget site plan, and I think that's for framing or putting a door in the back, and I remember from the start, we said we would not need that, they could back up, we were putting in Rockland because they have to stop in the middle of traffic and back up, it's dangerous. And Bourget, we're coming right off the main street, it's the only street for that place, I don't see why we need doors in the back and the front, and even to put a structure or a frame in there for future, we shouldn't have to do that. There's cameras, there's everything, they can back up, they can do it in Ottawa, on main streets, back up, I know at the corner of King Edward, there's one, and they back up in the middle of the street there, and there's a lot more traffic than anywhere else, so, so I don't see why we need to go in through.
As you say, Count had mentioned it, I think it was the last meeting to add cameras into the budget, and he'd be able to put on the fire trucks.
Yes, Monsieur Navia.
It was brought up to consider the expenses of putting the second set of doors in by Councilor Chouagnier, she had mentioned it, so at this time, before we built the buildings, we wanted to present the policy for consideration.
But I don't see, we, right now, it's an expense that we don't really need, and everybody's used to backing up, especially if you can back up at the small fire station that we've got in Bourget, you can back up anywhere. That's the way I look at it. Yes, Mr. Wilson?
I guess, through the mayor to the mayor. Yes, I mean, backing up is an option, we do it today in most stations, we have had a number of backing incidents in my short time with the city, that end up costing us a fair bit of money in repairs to equipment, which are innocent mistakes, the hope is with drive-through bases, you eliminate those. The ask, the difference between option A and option B is roughly $55,000 on a building that's going to last you 60-plus years, your cost per year is not a whole lot of money to add that, that infrastructure in now. I guess, to Councilor Zandt's point, we have, I have grilled our, both our project manager as well as the contractor, the general contractor, on expected other contingency items. The only real big contingency item that remains is a question mark in regards to what we're going to find under Laurier Street as we go to do service connections. So, we have estimated some money for that, that we believe to be on the high end, we still project that we will be within the overall budget allocated by council for the project, which is why we were comfortable bringing some of these options forward now for consideration, in that hopefully we... bringing some of these options forward now for consideration. In that, hopefully, we can reduce backing incidents. Not that we'll never happen, but if we can reduce that eventuality, that's a preference. They go with drive-through bays. Certainly, that's somewhat space limited. In Burjet, space isn't the issue. It's the cost of the additional asphalt.
What am I trying to have?
That's what I was going to say. When you look at how many years it's going to be used.
I know, but I'm looking at the cost right now, like Monsieur Zant said.
No, I understand that, but it's, it would be so much more expensive to add it later on. You know, we don't know what else is going to be built on that street. There might be other, other houses or...
I think we're going ahead. We're doing a great project here and I don't think there's any need to put more money in. And I think we've been fair enough. We're two nice stations and I think right now our budget is tight and I'm afraid of spending that.
Yeah, but we said that safety was our priority in our work and it isn't.
How many stations back up in their stations? All over the place. In Ottawa, on Main Streets, Montreal Road, anywhere you go, they back up in there. I know, I know what you're going to tell me, but I know I still say, we've got lots of space. There's no stress of backing up where you're going to be because there's no traffic there. There'll be two fire trucks and if one can't wait for the other one, then we have a problem. Mr. Wilson?
Go ahead.
Are they going to be one behind the other? Or are they all one beside each other?
The hope in Burjet is they would be one beside each other.
Monsieur Lallon?
I fully agree with the Mayor because when we have a discussion here about the estimate, when we discuss three million for Burjet and three point five, I believe, for Rockland, we have discussed about the landscaping, the dishes, and now if you're talking of having doors at the back of Burjet, it means that we have to do the landscaping because it's like a swamp in the back. So, the truck cannot go in by the back door at the present time. And also talking about that, in Toronto, the fire station on College, they're all backing up there. In Ottawa, Laurier, King Edward, they're backing up there. So, really, there's a total amount of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred here. And we had discussed that during the debate here, that we, the paving behind the Rockland Fire Hall, it's the same. We knock it off and now we're coming back with it.
So, if you can back up, one can back up, the one in Rockland too.
Well, no, the Rockland was busy. That's why we said we went ahead with the doors to come in the back and out of Rockland. That's why.
Not as busy as College Street.
We're talking about, we're talking about Burjet. Monsieur Zant?
The thing with all the old fire stations is they were all built to back. So, there was no room. So, we can talk about whether they back up. Of course, they have to back up because they were built like twenty, thirty years ago. My only worry, I honestly, if somebody wants back doors on there to look around, I do agree with Monsieur that, oh, and if you think it's going to be as easy as laying asphalt down back there, no, there's going to be a lot of work that are going to be needed on the grounds to make sure that it can sustain those trucks. If that's the case, then fine, so be it. My main problem is the fact that a, that Colliers did not identify these things prior to. We had this conversation about doors. Where were they to talk about it? Where were they to go, well, I really suggest you put them in? They have, have, you know, revisited that. If, if the doors in Burjet make things simpler, it doesn't matter to me. I'll leave that to the council.
But I've got to agree with Monsieur Lallon. There's going to be extra cars when it comes along. If it's a swamp back there, has anybody checked that? How much fail, how much? Yes?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we have addressed soil conditions in both sites with a number of soil samples taken at both sites. The numbers that are presented tonight for council's consideration are reflective of the soil conditions at both sites and what the cost would be to do that.
Okay. Well, either way, I just want to make sure that if somebody wants to do the doors for Burjet, I don't mind. I just want to make sure that moving forward, that this company that we paid a lot of money to hire understands that I certainly don't want to have any more of these kinds of like pop-ups. We expect them to understand. We approve money, go and build it with the specs we gave.
Monsieur Lallon?
Well, the only soil that was removed was that soil that Mr. Mayor displaced with his ten-inch shovel during inauguration day to take up what Medio stated. We received a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from Governor of Ontario to finish up the parking at back and Colliers didn't even think about this, you know, to do what it had to do to remove the snow. Burjet, the same rule applies. Everyone who lives in Burjet knows there's a high water table that's prevalent there. These are design-related mistakes. Now, the report also reflects those concerns with regards to sewer and water connections here in Rockland. There's a fifty-thousand-dollar figure that's put down here, but Murphy's Law always prevails and it might be more than that. I'm okay with radiant heating flooring. This on a long-term basis is quite feasible. As far as the rest goes, if we're able to avoid that, I'd be much more comfortable with this. Councilor Guimar, I believe that Colliers should attend when we're dealing with these items. Mr. Wilson, of course, answers to the best of his knowledge, but he's not the one that should be called upon to take up the slack with this. I'm much more in agreement with the radiant heating flooring. Let's keep this in mind. Let's perform the water connection. The building is not yet built. Let's ensure that there's water, there are water connections there. If it costs less than fifty, we can, that's fine. We can revisit that point, subject to our approval. But I complete, I'm completely in agreement to finish off connecting the water before putting in the two extra doors. I think that when you take a look at the fifty-thousand-dollar cost as compared to the total cost of building this, it's done. It's done for the long term, but there are other problems that will occur, Diane, on a long-term basis. It's a nine-million-dollar project. Well, if we're called upon to build a new station, we might think about the future. Now, look, we have two very worthwhile projects that are ongoing and if we are to put in extra doors, we have to keep in mind that these new projects will cost us money. Our contingency fee is required to, to decrease as Councilor Zant and Councilor Lallon has mentioned, you know, we might impact our contingency fund. How much is the frame if we are to put in a frame?
I don't know that I have that exact answer for you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm hoping Collier to come back here and explain us some stuff. They're the ones that are the authors of this, so let's get them to come back at the next meeting and discuss it.
So, we'll defer this until next meeting?
We defer that, but we approve the radiant heat.
I think we should approve the three, three.
One.
The radiant heat and then defer the rest until they can come and answer themselves.
Okay, so, just so that council's aware, that potentially could delay substantial completion at the city's risk because we're not able to proceed with site plan approval until we can grant those change orders for the site.
To be honest, is that really going to change anything? Because we're all pretty much in agreement that we shouldn't be doing an extra garage door at the end. I say we vote separately on each little item that they're, they're asking for and be down with it.
Sounds good to me. We vote on each one. So, I need a proposal for the radiant heat.
I propose...
Second. Hall in favor?
Yep.
Proposal for Rockland site plan change. Let me tell you one thing, though, before we have a discussion, I have Monsieur Boucher. It will be very expensive when it comes down to snow removal. Monsieur Boucher, let me know what explanation.
Give me the explanation you gave me when the time, when the center removes snow. Well, the way in which things stand with curbs all around, it would be impossible to push snow along on the other side. So, after two or three snowfalls, we'll have to remove snow on a regular basis to bring it down to the snow dump. It's going to be a costly proposition. Now, the only item that we asked, if we could have pressed curb where in one section, snow could be pushed in towards the eastern extremity of the parking lot, so that you could push the snow down there, we could store more snow on-site until such time that we decide to move it somewhere else. Is that going to cost us sixty-two thousand dollars? Not what we were asking for initially, but if they build the ramps in keeping with the exact construction codes as required, yes. Well, if it would cost us more to, you know, to move the snow from one place to another, well, eventually, that's what's going to happen. What's proposed is to build the curb that's being, that's being proposed. I believe we're talking about a twenty-two thousand expenditure and in keeping with the criteria, the standards, as well as the slope radius that is proposed. I see. Well, why don't we come up with a sort of like a makeshift map saying, well, you know, this is where we're heading. There's a trench that belongs to development, the Rochelandais development at the back. Mr. Mayor, you have to realize that that area behind the station will be approximately two meters higher than the existing parking lot facility at the back. So, there's a six-to-seven-foot change of level in between the parking lot that runs towards the back and the existing parking lot. I would have certainly liked to have an exact, an exact schematic as to where we're heading with regard to this. Even if you do build the ramp, then you need to transport the snow to the outside. Yes, but it would not be done as often. See, the way in which things are designed, you see, the project takes up the whole lot, the whole lot's surface, or practically though. So, we don't have much space afforded us to dump the snow. I see what you mean. You need to come up with a design to oversee this. If this particular curb they're suggesting will buy us time, look, the ramp leads from the employees' parking lot and from the rear of the station to the rear of the City Hall parking lot. This is not to allow fire trucks to come in. So, this deals only with the parking lot used by the employees.
They approved sixty-seven thousand dollars. We have no idea, no, nothing. And I think that's why we can defer this and come back, and Collier can come back in two weeks from now and give us more information. That's all there is. We're paying them big enough money. They can darn well get their...
And if they don't like the delay, if they don't like the delay, it's their fault.
Well, the thing is, it was brought to us in the end.
And ultimately, we have the delay at the end, but if we're going to build something, might as well do it right.
Madame Collier?
The sixty-eight thousand includes the curbs that were required through the site plan approval process. The ramp was a suggestion made to speed up and improve snow clearing to reduce some operating costs. These items came out of the review that was done when the site plan processes followed. So, the site plan passes through each of the directors and the directors pass comment. When Mr. Boucher received the plan, these are the comments he passed. And then zoning bylaw required us to put the curbs back into the application.
I just, I need to understand what I'm going to go on. I understand your explanation. I can post the curves because it's bylaw, but for the rest, I...
Mr. Mayor, we're talking about two meters higher than the actual parking lot.
Not two, two.
It's a two meter.
Yeah, but I was going to say...
Two meters. We, we have to do a lot of filling there because otherwise the truck are going to go up the hill. Don't recommend that.
No.
Mr. Mayor, if you recall, the way in which the town hall is built, when you go down by the parking lot at the back, you go down a slope until you, you wind up at, at the very end. Now, the parking lot that will meet up with the new building will increase right up to the height of the front parking lot facility for the fire trucks to go around, to go in by the back. They'll have achieved the same height as in the front. That, therein lies the difference between both heights. Two meters is quite high. That's close to six feet. You have to compact all of this. And curbs included in that, that's going to be quite a ramp-related project that will be called upon to tackle. So, I'm in agreement to have Collier come down here with their plans in hand and to give us more information as to this.
No, I think we're all in agreement with Collier here with the last items, the two last items.
That's right.
Because, as Monsieur Zant said, I'm worried about the eighty-six thousand dollars more would just seem to be adding and our contingency is very low, so I want better explanation. So, you've got the first one and I think we're all agreeing on the two other ones being deferred, so we get an explanation from Collier. Are you all in agreement to that?
Yep. And any further change, Mr. Mayor, Collier should be here. We have expertise, but they're the ones that are handling the project. They should be sitting here. If we talk about the fire stations, they should be here.
So, we're going to, well, the thirty-three thousand dollars for the radiant heating, that's approved. How about the other contingencies? Collier needs to be here for further explanation. So, moved by Councilor Lallon, seconded by Councilor Laverre, that the two other items that need to be deferred will be. Fine, let's go on now to the Lacoste Road matter. Councilor Lallon. Whereas in May 2018, Mr. Mayor, council adopted bylaw 2018-64 to authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign a contract with Arnco Construction and Excavation Division of 1351150 Ontario Inc. for the slope stability work and culvert replacement on Lacoste Road for five hundred and forty-one thousand, two dollars excluding HST. And whereas the budget allocated for the slope stability work and culvert replacement on Lacoste Road is nine hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Be it resolved that council permits to deviate from the current procurement bylaw in order to award the works for CCN number three for a value of one hundred and three thousand dollars to Arnco Construction Excavation Division of 1351150 Ontario Inc. in the amount of one hundred and three dollars. And that council adopt bylaw 2018-128 to authorize the treasurer or the director of infrastructure and planning to sign a purchase order to award the CCN number three for the slope stability work and culvert road crossing on Lacoste Street to Arnco Construction Excavation Division of 1351150 Ontario Inc. for the amount of one hundred and three thousand dollars excluding HST. Seconded by Councilor Simar. Fine. Bylaws, Councilor Zant. Do any of you care to remove bylaw from the list? None? Fine. Be it resolved then that the following bylaws be adopted. Twelve point one, 2018-108, to lift the part lot control for block forty-four, Plan 50M dash three-two-three, Deletin Street, Solway Wright for Riverlands of Rockland Incorporated. Item twelve point two, bylaw 2018-112, to amend the zoning bylaw, 2029 Clark's Road. And item twelve point three, 2018-124, to appoint members to the Compliance Audit Committee. Seconded by Councilor Simar. Any questions? None? All those in favor? Thank you then. Confirmatory bylaw be resolved that bylaw 2018-122 being a confirmatory bylaw for the regular meeting of twenty-seventh of August be adopted. Seconded by Councilor Laverre. All those in favor? Carried. Adjournment? Oh, called at seven fifty PM. My God, we've, we, we broke our record. Let's take a few minutes and we'll come back with the committee of the whole meeting. Thank you, folks.